Thank you very much. Li wito lakaka kina machwe nero sinasiminyaa. Kabu dulo kidula wa namolimpopo.
My name is Machwe Nerosina Semina. Min Semina, I'm from Limpopo province. I'm the daughter of the soil. I'm the chairperson of Home Affairs Committee. Rather, Human Settlement.
Agina disasa nana muna kitlufa vatu. I'm the chairperson of the Human Settlement in the Republic, in the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa.
Ki kina mudulasitulo wa komite ya budulabatu kamo parliamente ya Republic of Africa vura?
Rikilefa, otlawo thwarako pano ye, otlawo thielecha, loko boledisha na leba tuvali Mpopo, mo Capricorn District, otlawo kwama wa ikutu abo na, kamo lao te mala wana opalamente wushishi nyaa.
We have gathered here in the Capricorn District to come hear the comments of the people of Limpopo, Capricorn District, with regard to this bill.
Amongst the team from Parliament, we have the technical team, that is accompanying members of Parliament. I'm going to request them to take a bow. They must, because there is a pillar here, you just have to come quickly here so that they can see you.
Baba wongbasitlopasa rinam, baba sipila lerinaki wana basitlopasa chasi tere niki, ki wana ba ilorbatla yemelela fahwa le babon. You can warmly welcome you, them to your home in Limpopo.
We have the translation team.
Rinalestlopasa wofetulela malimi. Who are gonna help us to, so that the communication flows easily, we are able to hear one another. Can they also rise? We have the speedy team. One of them is Mr. Lemekwana. He used to work for a radio station, Tovela FM. Yes, another one is myself, Mr. Papo.
We have the translation team ya babona ba shuma.
Rinalele wana ba basatuli ba yonapulelu ya dia ta. Wana ba hono urikwa garatlo vela lakawo na mlaokaka nyoo.
We have the translation team. We have the one that help those that speak Shangann if they are here. Oh, she's outside. Malokuwa palame ki bolejo rkena mudulasitulo, I've got the team of members of Parliament with me.
Ki jijikuleji kere kenele malokuwa kese plafa, le malokuwa opalamente?
Honorable members, we have honorable members mahateze ki ochoa kofreista taliko haute. We have honorable member Emma Powell from Western Cape. We have honorable Nsisi Swai from Eastern Cape. We have advocate Masuta from Vembe liko haute. We have honorable Mohutu from Northwest. The member is saying what is rehalocha? Ki kama horolocha Molimpopo sehalocha?
Greetings.
So, this is the team of members of Parliament serving in the Committee on Human Settlement.
Se kislopasama malokuwa opalamente? Se se shuma omoko miti ya budulabatu?
Our committee represents South Africa because those that are not here and had given apologies, majority, they are coming from other areas. So this team represents South Africa. We are liking as the Human Settlement.
Bialo komite ya rinai ikike media Africa vura. Wanele ma malokuwa amangwa rinai aloragao ba ilongore le wana, batoa di karulungu chedi ngwacha Africa vura. Bialo re komite rekopani riye maji Africa vura.
Amongst us, we have honorable councillor Mama Bulo from the Capricorn District.
Mo gararararalele mchompeki councillor Mama Bulo, ochoa siletingsa Capricorn. Greetings.
Hi luhuri. Amongst us, we have traditional leaders because Molimpopo, we are led by traditional leaders who might have not, who might not send them rehalocha.
Gleylo gorimshomwe mo gararararina rinalele weta ba etapile basi iju. Ki atsebago re Molimpopo rinalele ba etapile basi iju.
Kaka nyua unyakawo, thama tikulugu yangu kontisha. Ngu kontchabao iligu, wanapazee na ngu babao bazana ngu industry. Yagawa emingwa ku, kadi niela no, cha kontraka, cha ngu kontisha gori. Bajia sabaka maraki ngu.
The bill further seeks to align and create synergy with other relevant pieces of legislation, such as Public Finance Management Act of 1999 and Promotion of Administrative Justice Act of 2000.
Mula waka kanyua unyakaloko lekanya, loko thama sae nejele di ripa jele ngwe cha mula. Cha male iba, bialo ka mula watau lo, yadi chellete cha sechaba 1999. Le mula wa kudisho, yaduka, yadsepidisho, iligu mula wa 2000.
So the summary of the bill, the chapter one of the bill deals with the definition, application of the act and application of the Public Finance Management Act to the council.
Kawalo yapi li yamala waka kanyua, ibulelaka, di taluso, lipetaka jo yamala. Lipetaka jo yamala watau lo, yadi chellete cha sechaba, kule kuta.
The bill makes provision for, under earlier, the definition of the bill to expand the protection afforded housing consumers by including repairs, renovation, alteration and addition to an existing home under the council regulatory regime.
Mula waka kanyua uniela na, ka haraka jele ngwe. Taluso yangu aga, kukatulusha chirele jo abareki, wame ngwaku, wa agarajua kulu kisha. Timsa facho, di petusho, loko okecha ngwaku, kata sakatau lo, yale kuta.
The scope of the application of the legislation is extended to include not only builders who undertake home building as a business, but also owners builders. Owners builders are included in the definition of home building and are required to register with the council.
Di tenja petaka jo yamala, di katulushi jo gori, di agarajua baari, ba u iligu benba minguaku. Isegu feela baari, ba obale minguaku, yawa oba, yawariwa.
Chapter two, sorry.
Baari ba u iligu benba minguaku, ba agarajua talusung, yamariwa ngwaku, omi baswaneji nguwa ri xale kute.
Chapter two of the bill seeks to provide for continuation of the council established in terms of section two of the act as a jurispric persons to be known as the National Home Building Regulatory Council. It further seeks to provide for the objectives of the council, governance and the structure of the council.
Kawalo yabo bedi yamala waka kanyua, inyakawo niela na, ka jojo pili, yale kuta. Loko thamiwago ya, kaka rolo yabo bedi yamala. Bialo ka mutu wasimula, gurilizibi webi, yaleka lekuta latau lo, yagawa emingwa ku, labasichaba. Inyakaloko niela na, kama ike misheju, yale kuta.
Chapter three of the bill seeks to provide for the registration of home builders and developers, the establishment of the register of the home builders, the requirements of registration, the suspension of the registration, grading of the home builders and the liability of unregistered home builders or developers.
Kawalo yabo raruu yamala waka kanyua, inyakawo niela na, ka ngwadi shu yabaari benba ngwaku, lebachi lechi benba ngwaku. Thamo yaregistera yabaari benba ngwaku, di nyakwa cha ngwadi shu, ofewa ngwadi shu, ofewa baari benba ngwaku, lema ike misheju. Kama ikarabelo amuari wame ngwaku, yo asegu angwadi shua, oba mutu lechi, yo asegu angwadiisha.
Then, chapter four of the bill seeks to provide for the establishment of the register of enrollment, the enrollment of a home prior to the commencement of its construction by the home builder, consequences to failure, for failure to enroll a home, duties in respect of subsidy housing project and the consequences of a failure of the member of the executive council or a member of the mayoral committee responsible for human settlement, a housing, a social housing institution or a subsidy housing delivery agents to comply with the provisions of the act.
Kawalo yabo ne yamala waka kanyua, inyakawo niela na, ka thamo yaregistera yangwadi shu. Ngwadi shu yangu ngwaku, pele utwama ngwariwa, ki muari wame ngwaku. Di thamorago cha ngu palelo, ki ngu ngwadi xia ngwaku. Ma ikarabelo awama projekke yangu ngwaku, faumu ngwa ngwaku, akwacha ngu tusho yachellete. Di thamorago cha ngu palelo, ra molo kota petishi, obalo kala komiti yamaya ra, labudulu vyabatu. Se tonga sami ngwaku, yale ago, oba, agenti yamigwa ngu, yo benba yonaa. Bakwacha ngu tusho yadi chellete ifela, basala tele di niela no, cha mula.
Chapter five of the bill seeks to provide for the funds of the council, the home warranty funds, additional funding through monies appropriated by parliament as the council's regulatory mandate is a public function, the establishment of the nonprofit company, management of the funds, the fees of the council, the commencement and the duration of the warranty, the maximum and the minimum amount payable from the warranty funds, the claims and the limitations.
Kawalo yabo thano yamala waka kanyua, inyakawo niela na, ka chellete, yale kuta. Chellete yaguaranti yamigwa ngu, chellete yatalalelejo, u chellete yangu abiwaki parlamenta. Kaga lekuta leshuma na sechaba, thamo yacampani yangu sidire di zeno, tau lo yadi chellete. Di tifelo cha yale kuta, thamo lesebaka sa garanti, wunji lewonya ni vyachelete, yangu lifiwa. Ochoa chellete ngia garanti, di claimi lemewani.
Chapter six of the bill seeks to prohibit the procurement of the services to build a home which form part of the subsidy housing project from a home builder who is not registered with the council, relies on the home that was not enrolled with the council in the tender submission, who previously failed to rectify or complete the ratification of the structural defect as directed by the council without reasonable grounds or who failed to disclose any information prescribed by the Minister of Human Settlement.
Kawalo yabo thilela yamala waka kanyua, inyakawo tibela, kwacho yadi tirilojeu, iligu karule projekke yamigwa ngu. Yo wambayona, bakwacha ngu tusho yadi chellete. Mingwa ngu yangu abiwaki muari wame ngwaku, yo asa ngwadi shua goli kute. Reasiya ngwadi shu, ngwaku lekute, ka kupelo nyakawa yatendara. Yo maloba apa lechu, u ki ngu po shula, uva, ufelele cha po shulo ngwaku. Ala eju kele kuta, ntelemaba ka aga ukuagala. Uva apa lechu kele niela na, ka se di musho, yaru si, yaru shupa yacho, ketuna yabudulu vyabatu.
Chapter seven of the bill seeks to provide for the enforcement of the provision of the bill once enacted. It also seeks to provide for the appointment and the duties of inspectors, the establishment and the powers of the compliance and enforcement committee, the matters relating to administrative and substantive non-compliance and penalties relating thereto. And the chapter further seeks to provide for alternative dispute resolution, criminal offence and sanctions.
Kawalo yabo shupa yamala waka kanyua, inyakawo, ga pelecha petaka jo, yadi niela no, cha mula waka kanyua. Morago agosai na. Inyakawo niela na, ka thalo lemi shumo yaba tatubi, thamo lema ta akomiti yapetaka jo, le kapelejo. Merero yangu amana, lisipidisho, litokego. Yapetaka jo, ntelemaba ka, agu kuagala, lidikoto cha sewu. Kawalo ye inyakawo niela na, kamo kuha omu ngwe, wa gurarula matata, melatu yabo sinhi, lidisanshi.
Chapter eight of the bill seeks to provide for the various matters including the home building manual, the making of rules by the council and of the regulations by the minister, the recovery of the fees, the vicarious liabilities, the personal liability of the members, directors, trustees of the home builders, duties of estate agents, financial institutions, conveniences, the code of conduct for the council members, the home builders, developers and other industry role players. This chapter also deals with matters, deals with transitional matters.
Kawalo yabo siswa yamala waka kanyua, inyakawo niela na, ka merero yangu fapa fapa na, wa agarajua. Me nyalo waka yamigwa ngu, melao yangu dirua kele kuta lemelawana, yangu dirua ketuna. Hulo tishisha di tifelo, gurala ma ikarabelo aditiro, ma ikarabelo amalu ko, balaudi, maloko atras tiyakawa emingwa ngu, me shumo yagente, yabo uwalile ruo, di tonga cha di chellete, bura melao ba teki shu yamigwa ngu. Mula wa ma itwaro amalu ko, yale kuta, baari benba ngwaku, bachu lechi, lebachi ya karolo baba ngwe. Kawalo ye, isuma ra pele, ka merero yatu shu yama dyu lo.
On economic employment and infrastructure development, as noted there above, the bill seek to provide for the warranty fund surplus to be utilized towards transformative human settlement developmental program which facilitate growth, skills development and economic transformation in the home building industry.
Otabulue ekonomi, thalo le infrastructure ra? Bialo kaka kula udi jo mo godimu. Inyakawo niela na, ka garanti, gori chellete yangu xala, edirisho mananeo, atavolo yabudulu vyabatu. Okontisha kulo, tabulue yama vokoni lipetuwa, cha ekonomi industry yagawa yamigwa ngu.
The bill seeks to provide emerging home builders greater access and protection through equitable registration requirement, a grading system, the regulation of certain contractual matters and the continuous development and training. The proposed provisions covering the contractual matters between home builders, developers and employers are meant to contribute towards the sustainability of emerging home builders and the growth of the home builders industry.
Mula waka kanyua unyakawo niela baari baba swapikalelo, yo kulu, li chirelejo, kadi nyako cha ngwadi shu, uva kadi nyako cha ngwadi shu, cha gola echa teka teka no. Kamu kuha, wa goli kanya, tau lo yamirero yako kontraka eje gu, litavolo, litato, yo icho la gopi li. Di niela no, cha ngu shishi nyua, cha ngu amamirero yako kontraka magarin abari benba ngwaku. Bachu lechi, lebeni shumo, di teka baari baba swa, le kulo yagindastere yagawa yamigwa ngu.
That is the summary of the bill. So I hope as you have been entering the door, you have been given the bill and this summary.
Ye ki ona kopana facho, yamala waka, na getsepa gori. Relebele ludi chi, ili valali yaa, pilele mora gole yonaa, li fatulusha kamole kamole, konoko kwacha, kwetwe yata baba, bilite manai.
Now we are going to invite you to make your input into the bill.
Bialo ritole me maguri, lename, li chulele jele tshelo cha le na, mo omula waka kanyua.
I want ten people who would want to start making inputs on the bill.
Kinyaka, bantu, bama thomo bale sumi, baba nyaka kuta, kutalelecha, loko bulela, kamo waka kanyua.
You will do that in the form of raising hands and we will appoint you to go to sit on the middle chairs.
Eh, leta dia seo gawari, leemi xema atso. Ho emi xema atso, ki mka, tonama rago keta gori. Wenalo, wenalo, wenana, leka sepela ki mka letele, dule mo, di tulung, chiri tulung, chiri bamoga rimu. Litolu la goto, na keli, ta wulela mopili.
Um, I want to check in the house if we have people with disability.
Eh, kinyaka, go, lebele la pileka mungu, ngelogori, re na le, bantu, ba u ba, nagole matata, ale, aosi, tikanele milie.
Uh, kibana omutik, kupala uribe na number one.
I see the first one.
She or he wants to speak.
I see one, eh, let he or she be the first one to speak in case she has anything to say.
There are two, um, kupala urleba, leba feti tulu, um.
Eh, kibaba bedi, may you please allocate chairs to them.
Let's allow them to go to their seat before I appoint other people who would want to raise hands.
Ariba du melele ngu gori, bate modi tulung, cha wana chi cha kamopili cha wata wulela. Pili ngata, ka shupa matso, ama ngwe, au asancho, atavolele wana mo.
Uh, one of the things that we have noticed is that, um, people usually they don't want to start and we give people time because we want to see the number of people who want to speak.
Eh, maba ke ngamanchirele mugileta wa yagori. Hanchi bantu, basi yangu thoma, basi yangu baba matomo baku bulela. Ki kamoreri gu, renyaka ur omulumwa, afiwe na kuwa ur ate, avulele, atakono kuta, kamunu piro kuta wancha, samofatlinga.
Awali tme ka udula, re kule pointa, li tme ka udula, renyaka bawi bakolo fadi pele.
Uh, we want the disabled ones first. We don't just occupy these seats. The chairs will only, you only occupy the chair once we have pointed you to say you can go and sit on that chair, the chair, the what called, the chairs in the middle row.
Um, and we want those that are representing the sectors.
Eh, renyaka, ba u ba emichi, ngu makala.
Do we have them?
Ikabarana lemon.
Now I'm opening for all of us who are here, you can raise hands.
Biale, agarake, emixa matsoke, re na me tme ka shupa, baba sancho, bate, bate mula di tulung chela cha re.
Number one.
Wama thomo.
Me watuku. Number two. Number three. Number four. Number five, buti, yes. Number six. Number six. Now you must raise hands if you want to speak. Number five, yeah, come, number five, come, number six. You raise your hand. Raise, raise your hand, I didn't see, yeah, number six. Number six, number seven. Number seven, okay. Number seven, opili, etla. Number eight. Number eight. Oh, now we need number nine. Number ten, the last one. Li emejo uko ravare, lehonele emixa matso.
Uh, are you waiting to hear what they say before you raise your hands?
I want number ten.
Kinyaka wale sumi.
Number ten is there, come papa. You have only three minutes to make your inputs.
Eh, omu ngwale, omu ngwale na, una lemi tutu, meraro feela, orala telela kaga la bushuan.
And then, by lunguri, those that wants to, they've got a submission to make, they don't want to speak, you're welcome to go to the table and then you, you can go there and register your submission.
Bananya ka, u, 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 wala di tshalo, chelo, or, kiche di telejana, chiri nchiyana. Aw, lenale, kasika itu, nyaka wu thamu, idio uchiya taba chale, na di ngwadi lefasi. Lidisha di secretary jarana, xi chile molaa,isha di secretary, juana di tuluchiya, taba chale, na kamuka gachona, ba di zenché, oritete konoko yaparlamenta.
We'll start with number one, disability people because we usually know that you represent your sector. You have more than three minutes, the rest of us is three minutes.
Reta thoma kaba bedi ba matomo, ba u ba emichi, uva tuwa uva sae itikane lagu. Eh, kibana raka, no uva, okele cha metuzu, ka, yabaka wodinguana, ka yamiraro. Maragele baba ngu bakamuka gare na, metuzu, ki yamiraro. Eh, kare ta wulela mo, le sancho, le bolele ore. Mula woki auteka, uva mula wu, agu utefi. Wama thomo, re na milie remifile sebaka sa gori, agachala pili, abolele, ya. Oh, ikutaki. Eh, lika bole, lika bole la papa.
Tovela. Eh, Gis Kossana from Watitmo Extension for Greenside, Memberia Disability Sector, Apulukwana Municipality, Kasi Fesi, eh, Lika Hasting, Districtinga Capricorn. I don't support the bill. My point is one. The bill was never introduced to the different disability sectors. Remember, when we're talking about disability sectors, we are talking about different people. We have those who can see, we call them blind, we have deaf, we have physical and our challenges are different. And I'm saying are different, like those one who use sign language. For you to introduce the bill or for you to introduce the information, you need an interpreter. And then when we need an interpreter, it's gonna take time to facilitate that issue. And then for us, who can see, the blind, we need reasonable accommodation. The white paper is directing you that you must give us a reasonable accommodation, is pillar number one. You must introduce the bill in a format of braille or electronic so that I can go and sit down and study the bill so that I can understand and represent my sector. I don't support the bill, thank you.
Thank you very much, my name is Sitello Kossana. I do not support the bill. Here are my reasons. Uh, this bill needs to be introduced in different ways to the disability sector. We have our different challenges as the disability sectors, as the sector. For example, the deaf sector would need an interpreter for them to understand the bill. And someone like myself, because I'm blind, I need, we need reasonable accommodation. And then we also need a braille version of the bill, thank you very much.
Um, Eric, could clarify the process of the bill because I can clarify.
Can I please clarify the process of the bill because I did not do so?
Um, when the bill is being repealed, what, it started at the, it just started at the department level.
Re mula waka kanyua, o, o fetushua, oba, o, 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 o pumulua. Eh, sipi jo yeu, itoma moma, mayemongam, di horo, di horo jecha mushu.
And then the department will go and meet with the sectors. If you look at the summary of the memorandum of the bill, it shows the process that the department has followed to introduce the bill itself.
Omu ngu tlo mo horo, ki oni, ki oni lo, itla sepela, yaya uvoli shana le makala. Eh, uka lebelela, eh, yonap, eh, eh, yonamala waka kanyu, ota konoko, o, ochoa, 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 ohoro, ito horo.
And after that, the, the, when, after the department has consulted people, then the bill will then go to the cabinet of the Republic of South Africa, which is chaired by the president and then agreed with that bill.
Omu mura waga, eh, ona, horo, ifedi cheka mula waka kanyua. Mula waka kanyu, namile, ota rumeluwa, u, cabinet, yaa, yaa, Afrika Vora, omi ba, ba sekaseka, omi itla rumeluwa, omu presidenta, uva au fetishi.
And the bill will then table to parliament.
Oba kere, ota, ota fitla wa, ala, uwa peleka parliamenta.
When the bill is tabled into parliament, what will the parliament, before it can take the bill to the people, they will verify and check in terms of the memorandum that there was a consultation that happens with the, with the sectors.
Re, yeah. Re parliamenta, namile, re mula ufitla mupele parliamenta, namile parliamenta, itla leko la gori. Kaneti, uvilale di terisha no, lebatu, le makala, au fapa fapa na batwa, au fapa fapa na Afrika Vora.
And then the, then the speaker, the office of the speaker of parliament will then, after satisfying herself that the bill has followed through the process and it will then be, um, um, taken to the committee for process.
Namile, morago waga, ye na, speakera sa parliamenta, si hotofa di choro. Di sipi jo kamuka di, di latechu, omi mula waka kanyu, ota fetisho, waishua, committee, waya usekaseka.
Committee, the first thing that we do, we advertise the bill into newspapers. National newspapers that you have in the country.
Bialo ka komiti, se lo rasidira, eh, re snokucho, namala waka kanyu, repatala cha, uva uko, no kuala kuacha, namala waka kanyu, ka, eh, ma, ka, ka di kuranta, cha wasechaba, kamuka cha au fapa fapa.
And the second leg of the consultation that the committee is doing is public hearings to listen to the people themselves.
Namile, hatu, yabo bedi, ye ilongo re, committee yaidira, eba jo, na di chelete cha sechaba. Mo ilongo re, lepeleka le na, ota, o, o, chilele cha mayekutuwa le na.
And then the committee will then discuss the, the, the bill amongst the members of the committee and table it to parliament.
Otluka fao komiti, oba kere, re lema uluka komiti, retlo, asha, asha, mula waka kanyua, re lebele cha mayekutuwa, asichaba, o, o, morago mo, rafita ra, ala rapa, peleka, ngwakuwa, asichaba, peleka parliamenta.
And the parliament immediately adopts the bill because this is a section seventy-six bill. It will go to another house of parliament.
Namile, re parliamenta, etabela ona mula waka kanyu, uyufetisha, kapakaloro, mula waka kanyu, uwa Carlo seventy-six. Oto fetela, ngwaku, omu ngwe, wa parliamenta, ngwaku, wabo bedi wa parliamenta.
Well, rubijarke, N C O P, National Council of Provinces.
Rubijua, lekuta, la asichaba la di province.
Which represents provinces and municipalities, um, in the, in parliament.
Kono ilongo re, weyemela, di hati re locha di province, le, wo maspara, kuwa parliamenta yasi chava.
Libo ona, they will do the same process, they are going to advertise the bill, they will then again have their own public hearings.
Libo nabato, uva li ona, sipi jo, no tsonele ane, libo nabato kuala kuacha, patala cha mula waka kanyu.
I'm Mula. Yeah, yeah, my mother gave me a gift. She gave me a gift of a car. And I'm going to buy a bank. And I'm going to buy the Insurance Act. And I'm going to buy National Credit Act. But I'm not going to buy a bank. I'm going to buy a credit card. I'm going to buy a bank. And I'm going to buy a problem. I'm going to buy a short. Then I'm going to buy a cover. But if you buy a bank, you have to buy it. I'm going to buy a short. And she gave me a gift. I'm going to buy a 1.7. Which will then read. The bill further seeks to align and create synergy. Lay the Insurance Act, Insolvency Act, Banks Act, as well as National Credit Act. So that I'm going to buy. I'm going to buy a credit card. Whether I'm buying or I'm going to buy a town. I'm going to buy a credit card.
Thank you very much. My name is Ronald Paleng. I am going to speak as a resident. Well, I, I am of the view that this bill is going to, to change our lives in a positive way. But I have two suggestions. I would like to suggest that this bill also includes, also benefits people in the homeland. And also, this bill must also talk about the inclusion of, you also include people who have bonds, who are paying monthly instalments for their house. This, this bill must include the, 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 the National Credit Act. Yeah, and so that people who already have, are paying a lot of money for their bonds can also benefit. And also, it can protect them against the possible repossession of their houses. Thank you very much.
Proceed.
I'm going to tell you something. I'm going to tell you William Matala from Ward 42. Under Mr. Matunzi, he canceled. So, let's see. I'm going to say. Let's see. If you want to pay. If I'm going to pay. Now, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay. 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 And if I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. When I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. As long as I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. When I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay immediately. So, if you want to pay, you want to pay. If you want to pay, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. So, if you want to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. As long as I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. In public, we can say, I can do one, two, three. But after, the party, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. Some of America, they're going to pay. They're going to pay, what do you call it? They're going to pay small businesses. Because I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. Already, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. Before I'm going to pay.
Hello, Papa. Hello, Papa.
All right, I'm going to pay. So, when I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. How do you want to pay? Your contract is already appointed. All of them, they're going to pay. They're not going to pay. I'm 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 going to pay. That's why I'm going to pay. Why you want to pay? I'm stressed. Pay, pay, pay. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. Pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. All of them, they're going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. 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 If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. Because I'm going to pay. 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 If you want to pay.
Thank you, Papa.
Thank you, thank you very much. My name is William Matala. We, we have been waiting for, for this day. Well, we, we can speak. But then, we might differ here and there. We might have different opinions or, or views. My view is that this bill is meant to, to benefit people in high positions because of corruption. And I, I am on the view that corruption should be rooted out. For example, people who have money, they, they, they can, they are able to get away with any kind of crime that can think of. So, this bill will not benefit everyone. We are gathered here and then some of us are from the, the homeland. And then we have businesses there. Our businesses are not doing well. And then we have situations whereby RDPs are built in our areas. They, they collapse in, in, in no time after being constructed. Always poor workmanship. And then strangers, people that we don't know, are the ones that get contracts. They are the ones that build these RDPs because of corruption. I cannot even sleep because of this corruption. And we, we can see even in many other sectors. There's a lot of nepotism. People are giving friends and family jobs. And you'll find that somebody cannot even read, but then they get this nice job. Thank you very much.
Mama.
Hey, Tawela. Now, I'm going to tell you something. I'm going to tell you something. I'm going to pay. Now, I'm going to tell you something. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. I'm going to tell you something. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay this bill. So, now, I'm going to tell you something. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay. The RDP, the RDP, the RDP. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. So, if you want to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. Then, if I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. And if I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. Then, if I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. So, if I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm options, the student engineer. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. The post of Moli Mola. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Mpa Marokani from Ward 24. I support the bill. Thanking to be part of the discussion about the bill. The only little problem that, that we have at this point in time is that when I move in other provinces, when I look at the RDP houses in other provinces, they are far, far different from those that are built in our, in our areas, in, in, in our province of Limpopo. For example, these RDPs in other provinces, you find that it's a standard house that has got a bathroom, that has got a, a little kitchenette and all those things. But with others, with ours in Limpopo, we are still subjected to the, 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 the little loo, the, 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 the pit toilet that is at the corner of the stand, where we have experienced some children falling into that type of a mess. So, right now, another thing is, let us do it in this way. That, for, for instance, if there are RDPs to be built at Ramutiba, it must be the builders of Ramutiba who must be chosen to work there. So that, should anything happen, we should have somebody to point to say, it is the responsibility of Le Megwana or whoever who built these things, rather than just having to see people coming to build from there, take the money and vanish. And another thing is, we must have, we, we've got our students, our children are at the Tivat Colleges studying engineering. So, those who are studying engineering must come, must accompany these builders during the contract, contractions. So, it will be sort of a in-service training in one way or the other, where they will be able to see that if there is not enough cement of Ward 1, the consequences might be this, the consequences might be that. And at the same time, they will be acquiring or gaining some form of experience. Thank you.
The pretty liar, but we want specific. If you can give us the specific house that has killed people. I'm going to tell you something.
The one who says RDP collapsed and kill people. Can you please bring the details to the table?
Because, as I'm saying, parliament is sitting. We must be able to follow up that house that has killed people and get to the bottom of the issues.
Please.
Please. Please. The issues, the issues. Man, 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 man. Or locals, I'm going to tell you something. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay.
Please. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. Please. I'm going to pay.
Um, Papa.
Thank you very much. My name is Tawo Nlozi from Le Pele Nkumpi municipality. I'm in support of this bill. Might have got a lot of parts. This bill, I think, it supports the working class. Because somewhere they say you'll get approved, disapproved. If you are not working, I think you'll never go well on this bill. That is my first submission. The second one, about vacant houses, RDPs where criminals are staying and killing people. What is the department saying about that? The other one, the last one, I'm going to give it. The last one is, how do you monitor? Because I'm not going to pay. But what we didn't do, abolish, they demolished houses without eviction order, without notification. So, how do you monitor these things? If you want to pay.
I'm going to tell you something. Papa. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay.
Can you, can you please come register the information here about the vandalism that you, you just mentioned here? Well, my name is Tawon Nlozi. I am from Le Pele Nkumpi. I, I support the bill. But I've got a few, the, I've got a few challenges here. My, my first challenge is that I know that this bill is going, is only going to support the working class. If you are not, if, if you are not employed, you are not going to be considered. They're going to be telling you that you do not qualify. And then, one other thing, I'm worried about these abandoned RDP houses that end up turning into drug dens and criminals, use them to stay there and kill people. That's happening in the, the area of Le Pele Nkumpi. Thank you very much.
Amanda. Amanda.
Awe.
My boo, yeah.
Afrika.
My boo, yeah.
Afrika.
Comrades and compatriots, why are you making a meeting? I'm not there. I'm going to tell you something. And what they eat, I'm going to tell you something. 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 Yeah, RDP, Reconstruction Development Program. Yeah, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. And each and every period of the votes, I'm going to tell you something. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. Comrades, if I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. Since from 1994, I'm going to tell you something. Some of the disabilities people, some of the people by the way. The bill I support. I'm going to pay. You, you, you draft this bill. I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. Concerning your avatar, yeah, the RDP houses. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. Structure, structure, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. On top of that, the cheap, the material is cheap. On top of that, I'm, 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 I'm still saying, repeating this. The material, comrades, is cheap. Contractors, with that cheap material in our villages, those contractors, while in our village, we are having our contractors in our villages. We are having artisans in our villages. But you find out people from other provinces or other, maybe, let me say from other provinces, they come within our rural area. They've been awarded some work. While we are having artisans in our village, while we are having contractors in our village. Comrades and patriots, they established this program, yeah, learnships. Each and every year, only the construction, a, 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 a learnship, the construction. Only the little base, the additional, the artisan. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. This kind of situation, during, okay, I'll fit a plastering, yeah, for free. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. Yeah, I'm going to pay. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. Yeah, I'm going to pay. Because of the cheap material. I'm going to pay. This bill is drafting, I'm going to pay. I, I, I feel that. If I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. But if I'm going to pay within our village, if I'm going to pay, I'm going to pay. So, I draft this bill.
Thank you, thank you, Papa. I'm going to go on a 30 minutes. Another 10.
Thank you very much.
Yes, well, yes. Mama, thank you. Number 2. Number 3. Number 4, Papa. Number 5. Number 6, Papa. Number 7. Number 8. Number 9. Number 10.
Thank you very much. My name is Mahete Mutepem. I've got a couple of points here. Mahete Mutepem. Here is my, my burning issue about South Africa. With regard to construction of RDP houses. I am from the area called Muleji. We have about 144 villages. And then, I, I heard the chairperson, Messiminya, talking about Johannesburg, saying Johannesburg is nobody's home. You are saying Johannesburg is nobody's home, but they do have far better RDP houses compared to us. We here in Limpopo, we say Limpopo is our home, but we've got poor RDPs. We don't have good houses. And one other thing is that when you come for the votes, you make us many promises. I, I do love the ANC, but unfortunately, the ANC fails us. Since 1994, we had many orphans, many people living with disability. And then, another thing about this bill is, okay, we can draft the bill. But my challenge is that is the implementation. Please, let's make sure that we follow the implementation of the bill. Let, let's not just draft it and, and then just take it out and think that it will do what it's supposed to do. And another challenge is corruption during construction of RDP houses. Yes, because now, we, 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 you, you call, you build us four-roomed houses with no inside toilets, with no bathrooms and with cheap materials. And then, one other thing that I, I wish to say is, please, let's source the, the, the skills and the services of our local artisans and, and construction workers. And one other, because you, we, sometimes we, we find that we source services from people who stay, who are from other provinces and that they...
who are from other provinces, and at the end of the day, it's us who are stuck with licking houses, cracked houses. And then, I want to say again, please, let's follow the implementation of the bill.
Am I that short? Thank you very much. Libisolaga, Rebecca Poshoko, from Wat 42, Ramatlala. I'm not into property, I know nothing about property, but I'm happy that I'm here. I'm trying to help my mom. There was a point that was raised from part of the estates. Why do we only have one white person inspecting the estates? I would love to hear an answer on that part. Two, regulations of the builders, foreigners, in their villages. We're not talking about the townships. We know where the townships, when you have to build, you need to have a proper plan. And that plan needs to be approved. But the same rule does not apply, Gomari. Why? I would love to hear an answer on that also. RDP versus, RDP is not Gomari, versus township. We see roads, Ramatlala Road, we are, Ramatlala, the extension, there are so many RDPs that are built. In my village, there's only two RDPs built in this financial year. Why? And then, I'm trying to help the youth. What are we doing to empower the youth, especially in the rural communities? Guys, we must remember, not everyone has an access to internet. Not everyone has an access to information, it's publicized on the bill, on the website. So, how do we get this communication to the people in the villages? Last, knowledge about the leadership, I think it also goes to point number four. Those engineers, those people, all their experience, how do we get that information to them? Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Poshoko. I will refer to the first speaker. The first speaker spoke about, spoke about the white inspector who is inspecting houses in the regions, in all the regions. So, that needs to be given attention, we need to get an answer today. Another thing is, the RDP in the township versus the RDPs in the rural areas. From the rural area where I come from, there are only two RDP houses that have been built. But if you drive through the Ramatlala Road, going to where I stay, you just see a sea of RDP houses, meaning that they are in big numbers. Another thing is the empowerment of the youth in the rural areas. How do we empower the youths in the rural areas? Because in the rural areas, there is no internet. There is no internet, there is no wifi. So, how are we going to disseminate, or how are we going to spread the information about the happenings that are going to happen in those rural areas versus the township? I thank you.
To support the bill, as you speak.
Let's go, let's go. Let's go. Let's go.
Yeah, let's go. 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 Let's go.
Thank you very much. My name is Maria Sebappu. First of all, I would really wish to appreciate the North Sutu version of the bill. We normally visit meetings like this, everything is presented in English. But I have a burning issue here. My worry is many, many RDP houses that are unoccupied in the area of Leboa Home. And some are just registered for infants. While we have grown-up women who are still staying with their parents and their children in the parents' houses, and then they are squashed there. I would like to speak on behalf of these women. I would like to say, can't we please assist these women? Because there are many unoccupied RDP houses in that area. Thank you very much. Can the granny come forward to register her story here?
I'm trying to help my mom. 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 RDP hospital view, I'm trying to help my mom. 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 The RDP hospital view, more than 20 years, I'm trying to help my mom. 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 Line, RDP, we're trying to help my mom. We're trying to help my mom. I'm 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 trying to help my mom. After, I'm trying to help my mom. I'm trying to help my mom. I'm trying to help my mom.
My name is Timo Kato. From Wat 13, I support the bill. The problem with the RDPs in Sishiru, next to the hospital side, those houses are not divided, resulting in the fact that it's all 17 people who stay in the house, all sleeping all over without any form of privacy. Another problem is that there are no title deeds. The people have been given RDPs, but there are no title deeds. And then, when the parents passes off, when the parents pass away, then there are problems because of the fact that it's problems of the electricity, the municipality, the water, and everything. Another problem is that there was one incident where an RDP was flooded. When we went to inquire about the flooding of the RDP, they said, "The RDP is built on a main hall." That is, the storm, the big main stormwater drainage. And then, after the discovery, then we told that quite a number of those RDPs are built on main halls. I have about 10 years, every year, trying to register for an RDP. But each time I go there, then I get a different story. At one stage, I went there to inquire, they said to me, "No, you don't have to worry, we will check on the system." Then they came again and said, "No, but you are not on the system because we have changed the system, and then it has been going on like that, like that." So, I think it would be better if the parliament could try and help us with the correction of this type of a problem. Thank you.
My name is Bruno Trini, from Wat 18, at Juju Valley site. I support the bill, but my problem, the chairperson, I'm trying to help my mom. I'm trying to help my mom. I'm trying to help my disabilities. Try to find the best way, yeah, or assist her, because the grant is too small or not enough for the bill to change. And then, I'm trying to help my mom. I'm trying to help my mom. Top political leaders, RDP. I'm trying to help my mom. Top political leaders, especially that side of Sishiru. And then, I'm trying to help my mom. The contractors, the RDP. I'm trying to help my mom. Because the best interest of the community, because but how much about a land, the RDP, what's well, long, or a level, which commission to their pockets? Not all of the RDP to long, or get a my mother, my mother, what? Okay, sometimes, really, what the rumors, Jorri, RDP, so enjoy, I get the cemented twenty, Marabat, well, I am, Barabauti, it's ten, much more, what the research, the supervisor, what the managers, the construction? RDP, I get the cemented, the suffer, the long, I want. So, Bella, the strict, let try and mobilize, a strict sheet, which I got, everything is in prop. Yeah, love.
Thank you very much. My name is Bruno Trini. I'm from Ward 90, 913 in Juju Valley. I support the bill, but here is my challenge. I would like us to focus or prioritize the elderly people and people with disabilities. And I would like, I would, I wish that you reduce their bills, the monies they pay for water and electricity and other services, because they only receive small grants. And one other thing is that in order for you to get an RDP house, you have to be known to some top political leader. And one other thing is that these contracts are given to contractors who do not have the best interest at heart for the community. Or all they are chasing is profit. You would find a situation whereby when an RDP house can be built with twenty cements, only ten is used and the rest it can be sold to make profit. Thank you very much. Come again? Okay, let's make it six. Okay, so, okay, girl, do my this. Uh, Lina, like Richard Maguela. I guess, or, give it to a guy, or, give it, like, oh, we, the moment, my G D D, the what six? They got running, score, or, what nine? So, I guess, or, for, the, 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 all we, come, guy, on. The low, Jabo, now, the, at, one, now, Vala, got, the, Jabo, at, one, got the RDP. And now, the RDP, J, they got, fast, I, now. And then, the, Bambi, he, he, N H B, N P R C, city, he, he, again, the, like, or, I, very, again. And it's, I, and, you know, about, again, I, again, I, again, I, again, I, I, who, the, the, again, I, again, I, what, the, RDP, J? Again, it's, about, eh, me, Zima, G D D, on, I, the, RDP, J, fifty. The person in charge, my counselor, or, check, I, what, I, what, I, what, I, what, I, what, I, what, I, before. Ever see, or, then, but check it to the next word, again.
My name is Rulé Mutiba, Ward 24. From Ward 24, I am against the bill. I am one of the disabled people. It has come to our realization that RDP houses are not built for the disabled. You go to all over the villages or the townships where the RDP houses have been built, none of them is wheelchair-friendly, meaning that they are not meant for people who are using wheelchairs for movement. And then, we are only 2% of the workforce. The people who are being... who are disabled, who are being absorbed in the job market, are those who were born freely without that thing, without disability, but who got disabled in the process while they were working there, whatever, whatever. Those are the only ones who are able to be employed. But those who were born naturally with disability, we are not being considered in the workforce. And then, the benefiting ones, like he said, are only those who got injured on duty or whatever, whatever. Those are the ones who can continue to get those benefits. I thank you.
My name is Matidiso Malapela, from Lepele Nkumpi municipality, Ward 3. Now, I'm registered with NHPRC. Mara, I renew my contract. No, I don't want to renew it because I'm tired. I'm tired. I don't want to renew it. Mara, I'm tired. And then, I'm going to tell you, RDP houses are not allowed to be built. They are not allowed to be built in Lepele Nkumpi. So, I don't want to build it. I don't want to build it in RDP houses. I don't want to build it. The parliament doesn't allow it. I don't want to build it. I don't want to do contracts already. I don't want to do that. I'm not going to NHPRC. I'm not going to NHPRC. I don't want to do that. 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 Because it's the nearest local municipality. And then, because... But I'm not going to do contracts. I'm not going to do village in Jara. I'm not going to do it. I'm going to tell you, I'm a councillor. I'm going to tell you, I'm a councillor. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I'm not going to do it. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. And then, I'm not going to do it. I don't want to do it. I'm not going 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 to do it. So, I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I'm not going to do it. Like, I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. Apply RDP. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I'm not going to do it. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I'm not going to do it. I don't want to do it. But I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. Although I'm not going to do it. But I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it.
Thank you very much. My name is Matidiso Malapela, also from Lepele Nkumpi municipality. I am registered with NHPRC. I've already renewed my registration three times. All I do is renew and renewal after renewal. I do not get contracts. There are RDP houses that are going to be built in our area, in Lepele Nkumpi. I would like to plead with the chairperson. Please make sure that when those RDP houses are being built, please consider people who are registered with NHRC. And also, consider people who are from the surrounding areas. Because contracts from far places come in our areas and they bribe councillors and we do not even get opportunities of being subcontractors. And then, another thing I would like to say, let us monitor what's happening in Matibe. In Matibe. There are houses that were built in that area, but they are still incomplete. People go there and then complete those houses. Maybe you find that it doesn't have a roof. A person will go there and then put a roof there and then stay in that house, even when they are not the rightful beneficiary of the house. And then, also, what's happening in Leboa Komo, in F extension? Those houses are rented out. People who stay there are tenants. They are not the owners of those houses. Please, let's resolve that challenge. Thank you very much.
I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. Mara, I don't want to do it. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I'm not going to do it. I don't want 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 to do it. Mara, I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. Because I'm not going to do it. I don't want to do it. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. I don't want 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 to do it. But, I'm tired. 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 Because I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. And then, I'm tired. The RDP is a squad. But I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. But I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. I don't want 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 to do it. I'm not going to do it. I don't want 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 to do it. Tovell. I'm tired.
Papa, what? What is the word?
I'm tired. I'm tired.
Hey, Papa. Papa? Hey. I'm tired. I don't want to do it.
My name is Jonas Masia. The main problem that I'm having is the RDP houses. It takes years to be allocated an RDP house. Is that fair? We know the people responsible to the allocation of houses and also those who are doing corruption from within. They end up saying they cannot build for me an RDP house because they see the little bricks that are made in my little stand. So, one councillor promised me that he will help, but now, he promised me that he would help me with getting the RDP house. But now, as you can see, in the areas where these things, where the RDPs, RDP houses are being built, these guys, these people, the owners of the contractors, leave these builders without paying them a cent. So, these guys don't have money to buy food or any other thing. So, they cannot go to the neighborhood and ask for meal and some form of relish or whatever. So, they end up selling these cements in order to survive, to buy food with money. Thank you.
The chairperson, you don't want to talk about the department. He failed, he failed. He failed. He didn't do it. Since the women's settlement. He didn't allow it. He didn't allow it. He didn't allow it. One, the RDP. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. The RDP, since the election, the government didn't allow it. They 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 didn't allow it. Then, he didn't do it. But I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. He didn't do it. He didn't do it. He didn't do it. He didn't do it. Because last year, they didn't do it. They didn't do it. They didn't do it. He didn't do it. He didn't do it. Because I don't want to do it. The chairperson, if you don't allow it, the parliament doesn't allow it. They don't allow it. They don't allow it. The election, they don't allow it. But I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. I don't want to do it. Because I don't want to do it. The NHRC, I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it.
Thank you very much. My name is Abraham Mabizela. First of all, chairperson, I would like to say your department, your Department of Human Settlement, we know that it's a failure. Actually, I can say it has already failed dismally. Otherwise, we support the bill, but we know that there will never be implementation. In our ward, we have many incomplete RDP houses. Actually, it's about six of them and some of them have had to be demolished because they become... because they had become hiding spots for thieves and thugs. And then, now, another challenge is that we have people occupying RDP houses, even when they are not the right beneficiaries. Councillors control the list. They are the ones who decides who stays in the house. So, I would like to say to you, honorable chairperson, please don't relax in parliament. You promised that you would work for the people. And we have houses where people have had to put and pay for rooms, rather, roofs for themselves from their pockets. And then, as for NHRC, I can't even mention those ones. Those ones, they are just to eat our membership monies. Thank you very much. I'm only going to recognize those who are going to talk about the bill. Those who have other challenges with RDP houses, please go to the table and then your submissions will be taken.
Number eight. Number nine. The last one. The last name. Governor Hotzofech. I'm not going to do it. Number ten. I'm not going to do it. Papa, how are you? I'm tired. I'm tired. I'm tired. I'm tired. I'm tired. I don't want to do it. I'm tired. I'm tired. Papa. I don't want to do it.
Chairperson?
Papa, I'm tired. I'm tired.
Everybody on the queue, please talk to the bill. If you're not going to talk about the bill, I'm going to cut you.
Papa?
Chairperson?
Yes.
I'm tired. I'm tired. I'm tired.
I don't want to do it. 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 I don't want to do it.
Honorable Taki, the gentleman here has some private challenges. Can you please assist him? We want to talk about the bill.
Papa?
Please, let's give others a chance to be listened to and to be heard.
I'm the director of Livomahai Trading and Projects. I'm not going to do it. NHPRC is a council I feel smart. I don't want to regulate trade industry. I'm tired. At the end of the day, the contractors, they fetch only foreigners. And we are not able to transfer skill. I don't want to do it. I refuse support. And one other thing. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I'm going to NHPRC, I'm going to declare inspector in five days. Maybe I'm not going to do it. I don't want to do it. Inspector in less than five days. And so, I don't want to share it. And one other thing, funds are available so that people, they are going to do service training, they don't want to do something, they don't want to decide skills they are transferring. And one other thing, I'm tired. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. Because I'm tired. I'm tired. And I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it.
Papa?
My name is Livomahai. I support the bill. I am from Lepele Nkumpi. And then, I support that the NHPRC must be empowered. I say so because most of the time, there is an outcry that foreigners are being given priority when it comes to job allocation on the building sites. So, NHPRC must be empowered. And then, like he said, the foreigners are getting jobs at the expense of the locals. Now, the NHPRC also brings an inspector in five days. But if something could be done, that the inspector should be on site within two or one or two days after the job has been done. Another important thing is the thing of skills transfer. We've got our children who must learn sort of in the form of in-service training that is observing the job as it is being done. So, in that way, definitely it will be helping our communities in the local. Another thing that is important is the banks. The banks seem to be supporting financially only those applicants who are staying in the townships. They don't lend, give loans to people who are building houses in the rural areas. So, another, the most important thing is that the banks must be encouraged to support or give loans to those people who are staying in the rural areas as well because it will be the same loan that is being applied for by someone who stays in the township. Thank you.
Papa?
Tovell. I'm tired. I don't want to do it. 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 But, he doesn't want to do it. I don't 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 want to do it. He proposed to cut the middleman. He said, the RDP, if you don't allow it, you don't want to do it. He said, if you don't do it, maybe you don't plan around that. Or the middleman. You don't want to do it. I 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 don't want to do it. You don't want to do it. He didn't want to do it. He trained the bricklayer. He did construction. He said, if the middleman, he utilized it, he didn't do it. He said, it's safe to do it. He didn't want to do it. He doesn't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it.
Gue ba gata baile ki vilajia tawaya inspection. Aku bale accountability ore, ma fele onzuzibar na. Di ndojar na idia, kijwa na jama. Ma yamago di mo goba kijwa eja, jere lu kilena. Orre forever tada badi ndojelore, rena prakshikalwa la mizi. Bala ka waita bilire, niwana ore. Aku di, di sinyagi. Eh, lita ba yavat foba, du langaradi. RDP jelore, ekshadigi vilajia ore. Aba, ba du la gamu ba, kur ba di wa di shichi. Ba du la, abadu li ga ra ga ijo. Ba duji, ba duji gamu ga edin do, di du la ba, ba di hiri sha. Jaa, jaa fele jo, di bali, ba bali zen. Bala rokupela ora gobele mu lau, oelorun ta diya. Oelorun, gue mu shasa du gamu ar RDP. Ai fiwa wa itoga, tawe.
Eh, gi sa ba da bi. Uh, thank you very much, my name is uh Jeffrey Mitlapi. Uh, from what, uh, 13, I am uh an EFF member in good standing, I support the bill. Uh. Uh, uh, I'm, I'm worried about uh the monies paid for people who build, who build these houses. The money is very less. This uh ends up putting in a challenge whereby uh this uh con- construction company owners resort to hiring uh foreign, uh, illegal foreign nationals. Uh, and then also, uh, that also bring us a challenge of uh uh, a bad quality of work done on this RDP uh houses. Uh, we need to, to strengthen our monitoring. Uh. We also need to know how much is spent on, on each uh RDP, how much uh, how many, and also how many cements uh used on each RDP. And then uh, I, I also wish that we can empower our engineering students. Uh, they can help us uh with monitoring the construction. Uh, and also uh, uh, the people who built these uh houses, they should uh be accountable, they should take, the issue of accountability should be key. Uh, and also, the issue of inspection is also very important. We need uh proper uh independent people to come and inspect these houses. Uh, so that we can uh avoid poor workmanship. Uh, and then another uh challenge is that uh people hire, they, they rent out uh this uh RDP houses, they do not uh uh, uh, stay in these houses, that's another uh, uh, thing that needs to be uh resolved, thank you very much.
Yeah. Uh, tawela, shabaka muka. Baba la melde Africa boora, re rhotza balele. Eh, itabaka muka re du kuele, i vilare taha. Taba ya bili, re rawa, itabaka jere butulo, jere butula di nyaga, le ba du li ba Africa boora. Jere saranya kim fe la, kijere di kwang, mos shaben. Shabasara nasala ka jere kopa na le so. Bala eh, mamusara, mamu du la stulo. Palamenta ya shoma. Eh, kena wa orle na merkola gu monetary department nijale na, we akari. Papa papa nea ora na ora na, egaba didia moshumo wa kamukwa maleba na. Sere stegimfa, lisere ya ka ore, lerfetwa kwe re nyaga. And then, gera ya kuata bengade RDP. Eh, kena wa na ore, egara gona le ba tualwa, kati le le ma councilara. Obonawa ora, shabasa si mu le si si mu, gresi hu ma la di RDP. Wa lebele la ora na, egaba di sepi jo wa ya kamukwa maleba na. Egaba, ke jere taro, du me, di taro lo keloka, shumi shua wa re la ba du li ba na re arana na. Ke kipu pele, erifanyo. Le ba le ba di certificate di ja, eh, re rhi ba na kuwa, jere fili mbatuwa shu. Renke be roka walea. Gar shabasala, CIM, C register, asidira engi, asu hu ma le moshumo. Rea zivore, moshumo ifua kamukwa ma, ngijua anga vyang. Re rho pe la, mu thongo wa go, wa go mu lo mu we, mu mu wa re ngemethano. Wa twa ba na ngeli jo na jee, wa hu ma le di subcontractor, wa ko lo shu ma moshumo lo we. Unlike mu thono, thora di bampiri di mimi, la ba fele jadi la thare, lo pa ta ra di lo garre, di hu ma le di moshumo garre di re. Ma eh, mamu du la stulo. Lenganga ma ta wa ni du la, jamu futu olé di shale marao. Aranya go sinyadi sa rela, machaidi kiana ora le avoni, asale marao, corruption ejo kamu we, ngelawa ora du la di fuwa ba twa ma le, re rea. Ke lebele ju, bolela limito, limito ki Julius Machaca. O jo ka watetika fasran tatera braz, kala bo.
My name is Julius Machaba, eh, I'm from Oh Machaca. Eh Julius Machaca, eh from uh, what 13. Eh, I support the bill. The only problem that we are having right now is the outcry that we get from everyone. That eh, it is also my plea that eh, the department, uh, uh, the parliament must try and monitor the departments so that they can implement, there can be implementation of all the rules and the regulations that are being discussed all along, every day. Another problem is that the RDP allocation must be monitored because the RDP allocation is definitely not properly done. So, eh, we must also give attention to those people who have got companies. These people who have got companies have registered with NHPRC and of which there is a certain amount that they pay. But unfortunately, year in and year out, those people have got all the documentation. But unfortunately, they are not given any jobs and people end up giving up and not continuing with the good things that were supposed to be done. So, if all those things could be followed and then there can be this monitoring, definitely something better would come out of the whole thing. Thank you.
Tawela. Tawela, lina lakaki Lucy Pasha, what 17 Kasyo. Ke isapota bili, mara mo ke isapota, ke isapota ore, iskiya lebele la le shakurlele ti. Iskiya lebele la fe la ka wa nengba twa bolela ka di RDP fe la. Asa ba tuka muka ba ba du langar ka di RDP. Onale ba twa ilongor ba du la ka di nglo ngjelinga jahali jama spala. Le bo na, eswa ne jo gor, iba kavar ka muka. Obulele ngijua lo ko gorengi, okeri ya ba twa ba we, kamu me zen. Uduji nglo kasaiti ngwe, akera zivore ma jere jia onale mezi onale ma bone. Karata ya mezi ibija ka lina lele ngwe, ma bone abija ka lina lele ngwe. Wi puti shagoro, kudira re ji juang, kamukwa no we. Baba we ba tu, mu tu uduji, onale me wa ra eh more than thirty. Adu li, aduji gamu zen, ugi timali police station. Onyaka letter of authority, onyaka o change handu, mengandu lo ko fechi. Oma sa ne jere bampiri ka muka, oringlo we ka na wa e change. Mara, raso ne jo gor aye ka ha e court, still, esamso goja. Over thirty years, na, mu thowe na utushua juang. Ke kalwa ka leo keringi, ariske ra lebele la ngasaiti di fe la. Re lebele la ba tuka muka, ka wa nengi, bili ki arina ba tuka muka garina, ki sinyagi real.
Uh, thank you very much, my name is uh Lucy Pasha, from what 17 in Sashiro. I support the bill. Uh, but uh, what I, I want to say is that uh uh, this bill must not only look at uh one side, which is the side of uh this newly uh erected or built uh RDP houses. Also focus on, 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 on uh those, those old municipal houses. Uh, we, we, we have challenges, uh, some of us who are staying in those mini, old municipal houses. You find that we have uh, when the, 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 the bill comes, maybe it ca, it comes in two names, there are two accounts. There is an account for water that comes in uh, uh, the, this name and then there will be an account for electricity that comes in a different name. And then now uh, uh, also, it's, it's, it's a very big challenge trying to change uh ownership of these houses, even when uh uh, the, the deceased owner he, he, has left uh uh, letters of authority and affidavits to say uh the house has to be transferred or eh she, she is leaving the house to such and such a person. Uh, we had this uh problem for thirty years, we cannot change the ownership, uh, that's our challenge, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you very much. Re, levo rele the inputs, jale na.
Thank you very much for your inputs.
Um, I want to promise you that uh, we are going to follow them up, all of them.
Karata oltsebi shagoro, tuali, itu tuali latishi shi, kamuka, kamuka joan.
Amongst us, I didn't want to introduce them from the beginning because eh, I know that my meeting was going to be directed to a particular direction.
Mo karagana, orenele ba twa ba ngbayore, ki beksa, asike ratogo ba tibisha, otuwa ma tsumo, kabaka laore. Eh, kopano ya re na na mile, ebeto fetwa, ya satla, ya ba ma ba bili tava yungwe.
Uh, we have uh, um, the head of the NHPRC with us, Mister Ramala.
Renale mu etapele war NHPRC, mo fale re na, ke mu re na Ramala.
Akay malabam lamona.
Can we stand up so that we can see you?
Um, and then from the department side, we have uh Mister Ngwenya, who has written this bill.
O jo korong, renelima re na Ngwenya, ke no, ah, wa dile ngimula ka kanyawo.
Mister Ngwenya.
Mu re na Ngwenya.
So, la ba du chilele na, they are lis, they were listening very attentively.
You can see they are sitting with you.
So that uh, your input must strengthen the, the, the bill.
Obi ba ti le je ka tuka me lo ore, di tso, di tso tso tsa re na, dehono ma ta fa cha mu lau ka kanyo.
Um, I'm going to give them an opportunity. Mister Ngwenya, can come forth and talk to the issues of the bill.
Ki tlo ba fasba ka, eh, mu re na Ngwenya, reta o kupa la fa bili, gorotlo bolele ka di tsa cha, osipala mu lau ka kanyo.
And then will be followed by the NHPRC.
Omeyo tala telo akiva na ba NHPRC.
Uh, thank you very much Chair, and thank you very much to the honourable members, les shabaka muka.
Ke lebo akudu, mtsampe mu la stulo, le ma lo ko kamuka, ke lebo les shabaka muka, and the community at large.
Chair, and honourable members, I want to confirm uh, that I've been listening very carefully on the issues that have been raised here today.
Karata o ni tfilecha gor, ki be, ki ti le di je ka tuka me lo, ma ba bili di tsa jelo, di ju lju fa lohono.
And as you have correctly indicated Chair, as a drafter of this legislation, I've noted with great concern some of the issues that are alike now.
Eh, bala ka obuleji mtsampe teri, mtsampe stulo, bala ka mtseloro, utadilo, namla ka kanyo. Ke lemu re le di tso tso nyana, jenwo tseloro, na jo na fe.
There are almost five issues Chair, that are of common interest that I want to assure you in the committee that I've noted them and I've noted them directly into the text by way of track changes so that we should not actually know overlook at them as and when we are finalizing the bill.
Ona le di, ntsanya na jete sanu, jelo re ke di lemu re le, omeki, ile ka, ka, ka di ra di track changes mo jo na. Or re rhotzo no tuto, di latishi shi, arhono le, lebele le di shi.
The first one Chair is, we need to have a look carefully in terms of the role of and the functions of the council, in particular in relation to consumer education and awareness.
Eh, sama tamo, ki gor, sonchir lebele le tava ya, ma, ma ekarabe lo ba moshumo wa, council ba lo hota. Ma ba bili, eh, tava ya uruta, bo na, ba re ki gor ba di ri.
The second aspect Chair, that we have to look at too is also the issue that relating to the role and the responsibilities of the inspectors. In particular, the inspectors of the NHPRC, as and when they come and inspect, you know, our project, in particular the housing projects.
Ntsaya bu be diki, onata ba ya, ya ro tla be la, le uruta, eh bo na, eh ba di speaker. Kudu, kudu wa na, eh, di speaker jelo re, ki ba na ba NHPRC, ba ilongor, ki ba na ba lo, ba alika, ba lekola, moshumo, moshumo o sepi chi vyang.
Because Chair, it is a law that for each and every project of the RDP houses that we build, as government, as human settlement, that project must be enrolled.
Kabaka laore, ke mu la, mtsampe mu la stulo gor. Eh, wa ko mu lo mu wa RDP, eh, we longor wa awa, wa ko, eswa ne jo, mu di shua.
And when the project is enrolled, it means that we should not be having the issue that after two years or three years, you know, eh, the house, there is a roof leak, eh, there is cracks on the house and so forth. Because the NHPRC in that project, they have to play a very specific role by sending inspectors there before any person receive a bill letter.
Omeye, bialo eh, ah, ah, ratso ne lo ko, re, 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 wa ko, mu di shu jo ka, onata la yowei. Ah, ratso ne lo ko gor, ma ra ga ma ngonani me bedinyana, wa o matinyana, na bile ra shi terba na. Eh, wa ko shi tu, cracki lo, shi tu dutla. Eh, ki ba na ba NHPRC, ba ilongor, sanju ba nefacha gor, seu asidira gale.
So Chair, the important part of it is that, the, that is why in this uh bill, we have make a provision now that it is a responsibility of the MEC and MMC responsible for human settlement. To make sure that before they start and appoint any contractor to do or to build RDP houses, they must make sure that their particular house is enrolled and therefore there is also a warranty cover on it by the NHPRC.
Ke kamu ore, tlo le re tsa lo shagoro, ra tso tso tsi, ki ma ekarabe lo, eh, MEC, le MMC we longor, ocha ma ekarabe lo, eh, mi wa ko. Gor, eh, wa ko, omu lo mu we, pele, oka awa, ona, ova le, wa mu di shua. Gor, eh, re, rhotzo no nefacha gor, ova le, eh, kavara, ya warranty.
I want lastly to emphasize the point Chair, that the committee must know that if the purpose of enrolling a house and the role of the NHPRC is to protect the consumer in terms of if the RDP house within the period of five years is got cracks or a roof leak, then they need actually not to go back to the NHPRC for them to come and do the ratification of their particular house.
Bialo, ki, vuchesha ba kere, ma ekarabe lo, ANHRBC, ki gor nefacha gor, eh, eh, ba reki, oba ba na ba di ri, shi me wa ko, ba chi re le chega. Gor, eh, wa ko, mtsampe mo ka re, mona ko nyaga, kafasran, ma wa re metla no, oh, oh, wa kujalore, na mile, oshi tu, ni le ma tata. Ki ba na ba sanju ba, bu ele marago, wo NHHBR, ba ko no tsa lo sa gor, ba ka, ba ka, ba ka, eh, ra la bialo tawe.
So my humble plea actually to the committee is that, once we see that there is a project of RDP house that is built, let me say, in your own area or in your own ward, the first question that you have to ask is that, is that house, is that project, you know, enrolled with the NHPRC? So that the inspectors must be there, that's a good question that you have to ask first. If it's not enrolled, you must not allow it to happen.
Bialo, wi, pile jo, bia ka, ki gor, eh, project ye mu le, we, ye longori ya thoma.
I want to remind the committee that in each and every province, Chair, you'll remember that each and every province submit to the National Department what we call the Provincial Business Plan, where it indicates where are they going to build the houses in their particular financial year. The last one question that was asked, Chair, that wanted a direct response was the issue of one inspector in the homeowners association in the gated village. I want to respond to that particular question. The complaint was that is a white person, one white inspector, that is always inspecting in their particular homeowners association. Honorable Chair and members, you can remember that we have drafted another piece of legislation in the National Department which is called the Sectional Title Schemes Management Act. The reason for that legislation, Chair, and committees is that is to transform the rules within that estate or within that body corporate is modulating and all those other things. We needed to transform those particular rules, the conduct rules and the management rules. That is the purpose of their particular legislation. So Chair, the last point is that we need to persuade the CISOs for them to begin to focus on the other piece of legislation. Not only the CISOs that deal with the levy collection, but the other portion that deals with the management and the conduct rules, which is called the Sectional Title Schemes Management Act, which deals with the transformation of the rules and the conduct rules. So that we should not find one person who's white, who's appointed as an inspector for a particular estate. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ramala?
Thank you very much, Chair, and good afternoon, honorable members.
How's everybody? We've heard your complaints and we've noted them down. From the side of the NHBRC, we realized that it was indeed necessary for this bill to be looked into and to be repealed and changed in one way or the other for the benefit of our people.
Our mandate, Rena, was very simple. It's to regulate the home building industry and to protect the interest that the housing consumer bring the beneficiaries. And re-regulate the industry through inspections.
We regulate the industry through the inspections.
Registering of home builders. During construction of these houses, including the RDPs, the materials, that indeed materials that are being used are of approved standards.
Just to be exact on the point that during the building, the materials that is being used and everything is of a required standard.
There were points that were raised that I wanted to respond to, but I won't dwell much, because you're already Mr. Ngwenya touched on. I will maybe add in some instances, but there were specific questions that were raised that I wanted to respond directly. There was a question of a white inspector in Pulukwane. I understood it to be in the estates within Pulukwane. Presume it could be Bendo. It's not the only inspector in Bendo. There are many inspectors, but it's the only white man of inspector we have in the province. So, if we're the real complainant, when you give a mahua amanwe in those estates over... So he's there. I know he's responsible for your thonil, your the alus, and I think would be, but there are also other inspectors that are assigned your Bendo reach, your wood hill. Or is it just about the quantum amount by lowering the block project or rectification program? I will unpack it nicely, but in short, the quantum amount, we have different programs. The program, Chair, is of far, but in the province, we are implementing consolidation program. So amount here on the RDP consolidation is 140,000, but you'd know. On the military veteran programs, on the EPN programs, on the Philips programs, so on and so forth. So... So Rena, rela-fapa la the Department of Human Settlement. If you are matter, you are not department, you are human settlement.
We are in the section of human settlement. So we are being empowered by the Department of Human Settlement itself.
Project, but the department, your province, it really enter into a service level agreement where it ammyle the whole province to check out into dealing blocked, dealing incomplete and unoccupied. What is their structural status?
We were given the status or rather the job of even to check everything. And then we moved all over Limpopo to check the incomplete houses or those that are not, that are completed but still have some defects and so on.
We've deployed your civil engineer, structural engineer, QAs. We even quantified, say to the department, for example, for these villages, there are so many houses that are incomplete. This is the structural integrity is compromised, the regularity will be demolished, but the foundation, this are of good quality. You can start going, build up until roof and finish. This is how much it will cost you. So Chair and the committee, I can assure you that the department has that program. We have even been allocated another 2,000, the previous three years. We've submitted the report last year, additional 2,000, and we could not even reach the 2,000. So each and every municipality, we said before we leave, please sign. We came here, department in these villages will get so many units. We came here, we could not find those units, all of them. Out of 50, for example, rehabilitate, re-levellage, I want to say. Can you confirm before we leave, this is the number. We worked with the CDW, the councillor, in all the municipalities in the province. The qualification criteria here, where you do not qualify for a fully subsidized house, but you also do not qualify to be financed by your financial institutions.
Somebody asked about how does one qualify because of the fact that you find that you don't qualify for a subsidy and at the same time you don't qualify for an RDP houses. You are just in the middle of nowhere.
There's a program, Filisp, financially linked individual, Filisp, financially linked individual subsidy program. Linked individual subsidy program.
Individual subsidy program.
If you don't qualify for RDP, but also the bank dairy, you do not have enough income for us to finance either Komaray or Modi Township. This Filisp, through the Department of Human Settlement, is there available for you for those criteria, maybe the household income is between 3,500 to 22,000. It is there. The last one, Chair, or the second last, Chair, is the issue of the inspector. And Ngwenya spoke about it. And it's part of the reason for questioning this bill, if we change it, if we refer matter, because... And I said it, Ma, that our province were lucky that we have a department that understand and wanted to ensure that they comply with the act by enrolling all the projects before they could commence with construction. And therefore, it cannot be that we continue to have should wakemanship, we continue to have complaints, within two years, within two years, cluster. But we are here. More like the inspector on the ground, we are saying, if you have inspected this project and there are this type of cracks or defects that we are identifying, you must be held personally liable. Lastly, Chair, and I think Ngwenya raised it as well. I think get our housing consumer awareness about their rights and obligations. And it is difficult to... We are trying. I can, that's one of the programs that now when I came in, I prioritized it. And those who listen to either FM or Energy, they may have heard me sometime early this year and last day, trying to inform the members of the public about our mandate, their rights and obligations. Yama felelo, yama felelo, Kia, ditu kelo, ucha ba xumi xi, ova wa naba tu, ba uwa nyaga, odi ndo. Kaba kalagore, taba jamu kutu, ditu, le-sedi buxue kachona, kago na li di ko pa no, jao sana li feela. Rena li NHBRC, garna masheleni, ali kanigu, oka ta ra kona, owo ta se chaba sao, li kanalele ina. Mara feela, morileka we iti kagona, riri itang, rita rebuli di shane, kase, le-si, le-si la. Kalitli. So, reha idje kile, Rena li starta tejinyana, mklungusla be rekanu through your support, of course. All these projects that are enrolled, on the site and over, where the councillor, the Maspa La Ba O, the Rapaponta, the CDW, that's where rearing. These are your rights and obligation, Rena, NHBRC, yes, you are inspector. If you have a problem, contact him, come to us. But also, when the MEC goes and hand over this completed project, religiously, with our communication, the legal relations, to say, MEC, now that you have handed over, should these houses, did experience any type of defect, but we are legal, man, no one alone, three months maintenance defect, one year roof leak, five years of major structural effect, it is the obligation of the contract. We, they are registered with us, we have their contacts, we will pursue them to go back and rectify. It's only when they fail to rectify, we SNHBR see the inherent obligation. Baba na ngili the issues that we raised, that I may not have responded here, they're on the direct. Has to do with particular project, especially the... Mogo rinna, oha NHBRC. Thanks very much.
Aboga, um... Ntadé Ramala?
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramala.
There are other questions that both of you, you could not have answered them because probably you are not, you don't have information on. I must start from the beginning, in terms of the Housing Act. It's not yours until you finish eight years in it. It's still a government property, therefore, you cannot sell it, but still it's yours. And if after eight years, you decide to sell it because you want to do other businesses and other things. You must go back to government and say, I want to sell my house. And government then will take the house, they will buy the house and give to another person. Therefore, it's not even correct for some of us to really hire rich. On the beneficiary lists, some they've said that there must be prioritization of elderly, orphan and childhooded family. This committee, when it approved the minister's budget last year. Minister has indicated that the third category, they are not supposed to queue on the list of beneficiaries, they need to be prioritized. And therefore, because the councillor is here, he will actually convey the message to both councillors and councillors who continue to ignore this sector. The good part is that this committee on Tuesday will be meeting with the MEC of Limpopo, will raise the questions. And the minister again came to parliament and says, communities, they are complaining of beneficiary list that change every, when councillor come, he change the beneficiary list. When this one comes, he change the, others' names disappear and all those things. Therefore, I'm going to digitize the beneficiary list so that immediately, we've got the system called HSS. Immediately, it approves you, nobody can jump you and remove you because the minister, everybody, including parliament, will have the list. And the committee added to say, Minister, because the system tells you this, that this person's houses has been approved, the person must be informed even before the house is built so that it can be part and parcel of building that houses. Because in terms of the process, when there is a side handover, they employ somebody from the community, who's called the CLOs. And the CLOs therefore should work with the community, must, before, after it gets employed, he must then be able to say, I want the list of the people that you're going to build the house so that I can inform them. And we're saying this issue, it will even help that you don't have invasion, you don't have people who change and chop the beneficiary list. The bad thing is that when some of the CLO calls you, you are not attending the meetings. Therefore, it's becoming very difficult. We are appealing to you that take part in the development of your own country. And Mr. Ngwenya have indicated that this bill is trying even to prevent the corruption. As some of you, you have raised the issue of the corruption, but without people's participation themselves, it might not work. Um, on the, to add on the issues of the block project, indeed, the Min-Mac, which is the MECs of the entire country, met with the minister and agreed that they are going to embark on unblocking the block project. The programs, the way it was presented to us as members of parliament, is going to take three years.
Biha lo eh reina, biha lo kama lo ka parliamente eh, le nanewo le reletisha mo u de u kore na, re budicho kamkuwa ilongu re, eto ba le nanewo la, minguakai merar.
So, we'll be meeting with the provinces to understand eh this year, how many of the how unblocked projects are they going to unblock because it's a three-year program.
Muaga ka muaga tebero ko pana le di profencing, refitaro ho no re re ho na u kwecha u kore eh muaga u. Le tiwo luchi manano amaka e kaba kalor i, ke ma ke manan- ke le nanewo la eh kitsepi tja yame minguakai merar.
Amongst us, we have Captain Disiba Ramushaba, who is the police book person, is a captain.
Fa le rinala, rinala le mu kapteni, eh le siba Ramushaba, ki mu kapteni was police sa, sa Afrika Vora.
So, he was here to listen to that some of you, you just go into houses and occupy houses that is not yours.
U va tiye le di cha, kuilo u kore, u kene ba tuwa ilongu ba no yame nguaku, ba no ba no fitla ba sena kamo, di ndlonche lo u ascha u ona.
Please avoid to be arrested unnecessarily.
Eh utlo ko mele u we fuga u swaro.
Eh, I think as as parliament, we we will actually ask the NHBRC to strengthen their inspection even before the bill is being passed.
Eh biha lo ka parliamente, rile ra hopela NHBRC, u kore ba matla fatle.
Re tlo ba hopela.
Eh re tlo, re tlo hopela ba na ba 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 eh NHBRC, u kore ba ba matla fatje, di tsepi tja ba na cha u lekula minguaku lipili eh minguaku ito u.
Eh, the other persons, eh the other led raised the issue of the houses that were built by the former government, where people have not actually received the title deed. Eh, and and eh, eh, we 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 will look at those issues. But what government has done, when we started, when government started the process of subsidizing people eh on RDP, they've said, all the houses that were owned by previous government, eh they must be given to those people who are staying in those houses because it was, by then, they were paying rent. They were supposed to be issued with title deed. We'll check what should, what would would be a problem with the one, the the issue that they've raised.
Unele ntsaya u we lo u itische ki ma u muwa fa, ya mabapili eh minguaku ye a ye ari lo ki musho wa maloba. Mu ilongu re u ba nele u tata ba u kwecha eh title deed. Eh wja, u ilo u ba le tsepi tja ye, ke u thoma eh nanewo le le la di RDP je di uncho, u ilo u ba le tsepi tja ya u kore. Eh ba tuwa ilongu re ba di kileba du la ona mu minguaku ye yaha, lele u kore ya ari le ki musho wa maloba. Ba kwecha di title deed, retwaye xala mara u ntsaya u ra, wa na u ra ilu kishu.
Oh, the other one has raised the issue that they need title deed, indeed, we agree with yourselves. Eh, every day when we meet with the department, we are fighting with them about the title deed.
Yo mu we u vulechi eh ka ntsaya di title deed, are, rinala nyaga di title deed eh nor dumela na loe na. Na kwe ngwe lo u we kopa na le musho, lo u koro, retlo ga reba vucha ka taba yane ya u ba tuwa, susanju ba kwecha di title deed.
And we 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 agree with you that as members of parliament, we should vis- eh be visible and we should, we should make the government to account.
Retlo ga retu melelele na, u kore biha lo kama lo ka parliamente, susanjer e bo na le, renitfacha u kore musho ochi ama karabelo.
I must indicate that Parliament of Republic of South Africa has given all of us, every member of parliament, a constituency office.
Kela echa ka pe fa u kore, parliamente Republic of Africa Vora, irfi le ka kamka rinala le maloko apalamente, o molo u we. Ona le kantoro ya, muwa a tja ono, kona mu ilongu u shuma, u u kona u shuma, u u shume la u ye ona, le filo le u tja ono.
And the staff in those offices, they are being paid by parliament.
Ba shumi, kana mo di kantoro njele tja, ba le fshaki o parliamente.
Therefore, it's important that communities must use these constituency offices.
Ka fa u utlo u kore di chava, di shumi xeri kantoro cha na che.
Eh, because the, the our system is that members are representing political parties. Sometimes, my office will be eh colored, black, green and gold. And the one for DA will be eh blue, the one for EFF will be red. And therefore, those that doesn't belongs to this organization sometimes have a fear of going into those offices. No, you should go in those offices, it's your offices.
Biha lo, kala ba kalatsepi tja ye ilongu re nelyo, na mu ilongu reyati u kore eh maloko apalamente, ki di ke medicha, me hatuwa fa fa pana ya di politiki, utlo kwecha lo u mtsomwe, eh u fita kuwa kantoro nyela u kwecha, me ba la yemi blue ya, ebe talalala rato ya DA yemi kubedu, ya ya EFF va yemi, yemi su liem lele biyelo ya ENS. Wa kwecha lo u re na mtsomwe asuena wa mhatuwa no, eh wa kwecha lo u cha ba, kuya kantoro nyane u kuisha eh di chishmucha u, le di 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 titeba cha u ona. Eh ki eh, ki tlo, ki tlo le eh tlo lecha u kore, sepe la ngale u kana mo di 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 kantoro njeu, li sheni eh di lo le tjo seje lo rata u lela kaka tja ono.
Don't have to wait for members of parliament to come to you. Those offices represent you, that's why they are next to your home. Go into those those, all those eh offices and register your issues so that it can get attended.
Leska yama la maloko apalamente ba etla o le na, di kantoro cha leka cha le na, di kuwa utlo tusha le na, ye ono na, ome eh di lo cha le na, di ta di ta Arabia.
And you don't have to go there and say ki eh, I'm a member of this, udo muja u kenamudua South Africa ke votile, ki nyaka tu show.
Ah utlo na utlo, u fita kuwa u u kenau wa mhatuwa u, you just go there, there and tell them that eh I am a citizen of South Africa, I need assistance.
With, in that note, we want to take this opportunity to thank you for availing yourself for this public hearing.
Ka u ya lo, riches ba kasser, lele u kudu, kare lo hono tja na kuha lena u ba fa, eh tiye le tja ye ascha.
Eh, after we have closed, we'll request that you don't leave. There are food that has been prepared for you.
Eh re as no tualela eh fa, ki tlo kope la u kore, leska sepe la, one le le di jote lo u kore, le le lukishu di jote ona.
And you don't even have to queue, somebody will come and pick you and take you where you're supposed to get your food.
Ewele leska, tualitwanya kore, le tla yama me taladi, uke le ba tuwa ilongu ba tuwa ta ba lecha ba 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 le ba ba light cha u kore, le tla kwecha ka i di jote le.
Eh, we want to thank you very much, I'm going to ask a volunteer who's going to pray for us and close this meeting.
Ki tlo kope la eh mui taupi, we ilongu re, akarutu alela ko pano, ka tapelo.
Can we get somebody who can pray for us?
Re kope la mui taupi, arutu aleleka tapelo.
Can we rise and eh.
Utabe la, se u di ra, ata uka, tato, tato.
Tato ya.
Tato.
Pe te.
Panaba ha.
Panaba.
Panaba ha uba ket, riya u boka.
Riya u.
Riya u boka.
O re.
Rinzi rita.
Rinzi rita.
Rinzi rita be la.
Be la.
Ri rita to yaha.
Tato ya.
Tato yaha.
Pe te.
Panaba ha.
Panaba.
Panaba ha, uba ket.
Uba ket.
Mu dimu papa kali na la jesu Christ one Nazaretta. Hoshi yamo Salama hau, ta u ya loko la juta, le miso nyale cha chi. U bo na echi, uli mu dimu, mu dimu akalu kilen papa. Karo sebele tso, yale cha chi, mu dimu akalu kilen papa. Rea lebo, wa mu dimu akalu kilen, we welcome you Holy Spirit in our midst right now Father. Starting from eh eh morning, mu dimu akalu kilen papa, ro bo no uli mu dimu. Mu dimu akalu kilen we, na mu dimu akau du budi, chi mu dimu akau ro ta ba le re, na mu dimu akalu kilen papa. Karo maye me Afika pa afi, mu dimu akau me, mo mu dimu akalu kilen papa, ro me milu. Karo miso nyale cha chi, mu dimu akau, utuile le re, na mu dimu akama filo, afafa pana, mu dimu akalu kilen papa. Ra na yama la mu dimu akadi na me, loa che di fa fa pana, mu dimu akalu kilen, chi re lo cha ya hau mu dimu. Ya sepe la le re, na mu dimu akalu kilen papa, le loko la hau kilen, mu dimu akala parliamente, mu dimu akalu kilen papa, basa ti, mu dimu akaka ratu lo ya Limpopo, juale mu dimu akalu kilen. O ta mu dimu akapa, pa ore khalifi xa mu dimu, lo u re fa bo xa, mu dimu akaluri elecha, mu dimu akalu kilen papa, cho te, kara tu kulu, mu dimu akaya la fasela hau mu dimu. Re mu dimu akalu kilen papa, re bolela mu dimu akachi re lecho, mu dimu akama eton, abo na. Re bolela chi re lecho, ta u ya loko la juta, miti, ya bo na, malapeng ya bo na, abane mbabo na. Mu dimu akalu kilen, re bolela chi re lecho, di tzele, kamo kamo mu dimu akalu kilen papa, basa ya ma ayin abo na, mu dimu akalu kilen papa, basa ilo shumisha. Mu dimu akadi na me, loa che di fa fa pana, mu dimu akar, re bolela ma di amar na jesu, re bolela mulo, wa la u dimu o halalela. Re bolela mata, amo yo me hetwa, mu dimu akalu kilen papa, di tzele, kamo ka, mu dimu akalu kilen papa, ri roote, mu dimu akalu kilen papa, u xakula masagare, mu dimu akalu kilen papa. Tompa no le rato, mu dimu akalu kilen, re bolela jo, mu dimu akaku pano, le mati di shoa hau, mu dimu akalu kilen papa, abi lele re, na mu dimu akalu kilen papa, le chi re lecho. Ye u bilen le, na mu dimu akalu kilen papa, karo mu dimu akalu kilen, this meeting, mu dimu akar, arakopancha mu dimu akar, korata re, na mu dimu akar, o ba ba kala ba re. Re kopanchi che u kore, mu dimu akalu kilen papa, re kopancha u koe na, mu dimu akalu kilen kara sebele tso, mu dimu akalu kilen papa. Ma waka koku, kua kaku, ukiwa kaku, sesiwa kaku, mu dimu akavalelo ku, mu dimu akau tja, mu dimu akama filo ngafa pana. Ri direka oreka u, mu dimu akalu kilen papa, ra sa ilono ko pana, ra sa wena ma ayin abo re, na mu dimu. Re mu dimu akama hau, ko pano, mu dimu akale mati di shoa, amo yo me hetwa, mu dimu akau sepe lele re na, u xaleka u sa fili, amen.
Amen. That was powerful. Talanepa tike, du lamfa tsi.